I call the Dixon County Commission to order for October 1st, 2015. Please stand to the flag, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, undegowed, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Approval of the agenda with no additions. I still move?
Second.
Then move to second. Any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Consent agenda, minutes of September 24th, work session, regular meeting, and KDHE payments of $108,273.48.
I move that we approve the consent agenda.
Second it. Any other discussion? If not, all in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, motion carried. Commissioners comments and committee reports. Lynn?
Last Saturday, I did go ahead, my schedule worked out, and I know Craig, you were down there and brought up some questions, Solomon, you covered that, but I did attend, they're at Hope, they had a town hall meeting, Senator Moran was there, and they had probably thirty, thirty-five people from kind of the Hope Harrington area in the south part of the county, but then there also were a few people from Solomon, so he spoke and answered questions, and I thought it was beneficial to be there. I serve on the KAC board, so the Association of Counties, we have a conference call that's going to be taking place at nine o'clock tomorrow, and it has to do with legislative issues, and some of the harm that could come to counties through the tax lid that the Kansas Legislature has proposed. After the conference call, there also is a meeting in Salina for the board, but it also is open to the public, and if any of the other, any of you would want to attend, or Brad, it's going to take place over at Salina, and Melissa Wagaman, legal counsel for the Kansas Association of Counties, she's going to be there on behalf of the KAC, and it will be in Salina, there at the city-county building. And so, and what they're doing on that, too, is trying to be mindful of the fact that on our board, when we get together, a lot of the representatives on the board are from western part of Kansas, and so Salina is just a little bit more of a central location, and so we're trying to accommodate it rather than a conference call, so we have that tomorrow at ten o'clock, and that's really all I have.
Over.
Last night, I think all three of us were in attendance, the Chamber of Commerce had a meeting over at Civic Center, and the main topic of that meeting was to get some information out on, on some of the needs that we have as far as our justice center, and I thought it was a very good meeting, I thought Brad and Sheriff Hoffman did an excellent job of explaining some of the needs that we have, and kind of the time schedule that we're going to try to be working towards, and anyway, I thought we had good comments from the public, and good questions that they asked, and I think we need more meetings like that, I think to let people understand what our needs really are. Also, I might mention that we're getting into a very busy time out in the rural area this, with wheat planting, and later on this month will be fall harvesting, and so just ask everybody to kind of be on the lookout, sometimes when farmers get in a hurry, they are not paying attention, but we try to be safe, and I hope everybody is safe for this fall harvest and wheat planting.
Thank you, Lauren. Last Thursday after the meeting, Janelle and I, Dr. Lloyd for the North Dakota Regional Planning Commission, nothing really extraordinary that happened, there was some information about regional waste updates, Kansas Housing Conference, and some other stuff that was brought up for me, it was about hour and forty minutes, and we were headed back home. Lynn had mentioned the meeting in Hope, Brad emailed me, and I printed off all the information that we'd had since 2010 with the situation where the postmaster at Hope had quit delivering mail out to the rural community, there's like sixteen or seventeen addresses. I gave that to Mike Hellstab, he's the aide for Senator Moran, spoke a little bit to Senator Moran, he remembered the issue, and the lady that was standing on the front row, I believe, that's your Lynn?
Yes.
He mentioned that, and he apologized for something he has no control over, because the post office is a self-funded agency, and they can throw a little wig around it, but there's nothing that they can really do about it, except try to leverage some influence over them. I did find it ironic, though, that we were talking about the veterans, and you know, keeping veteran services at home, you know, if you lose a community, the banks and stuff, more regulations than that the small communities die, well, it's one of those situations there when you make it where the post office isn't delivering rural mail to the people out in the community, that that's also the death of community, because Senator Moran was very instrumental in keeping most of the two-hundred-and-some post offices, the post office wanted to close, I can't remember what, how long ago that was, five or six years ago, or whatever, four or five years ago, I mean, he was able to influence them to keep them open, so it looks to me like the Senate and the House should be able to see that they couldn't get mail delivered to those people, because we had the pictures for the roads, that was one of the reasons that they said they couldn't deliver mail, because roads were impassable. Somebody spoke that, you know, that they were still, UPS, school bus, FedEx, is still driving down those roads, but...
And they aren't low-maintenance roads?
No.
I mean, they're roads that have gravel, and it's...
Right.
They're in the Dillon area, and I think the concern, too, is if it randomly can have a decision, we aren't going to deliver for a few miles here, can that happen in other places? I mean, it's alarming trend for...
It's kind of the effect it can have throughout the community. Sherry Massey was in for the GSIS Department Head Meeting, she gave a, does an excellent job for us for what she does. Doug's not here?
No.
We do have a public proclamation, it's supposed to take in two minutes, so we'll wait for another few minutes. Brad, do you want to give your report?
Well, yeah, I'll talk just a minute about a couple things. I told you sometime ago that we sent a letter through KDHE in regards to the Hope landfill and requirements, ongoing requirements that we've got with them, that landfill's been closed for up here twenty years, and we've been required to operate monitoring wells there to monitor the groundwater, although they've been dry for the last ten or fifteen years. We were, John Goff did a lot of work, and was very instrumental in giving us some details on that that we submitted to them, and we were successful in getting them to agree to allow us to cease the monitoring from here forward, and to plug those wells, because prior to that, they were requiring us to drill a new monitoring well, so we've got that agreement in, and it's been approved by their council and by that, and so as soon as we get the final agreement back, I'll get a sign and get it to them, and we shouldn't have any other maintenance done, just the pits themselves, so that's a milestone, it's something I've done before in Kansas on land, like a landfill like that, so. The other thing quickly I would mention is the bridge out at 659 1900 Avenue, we went out this morning and looked at it, looks very nice, it's all completed with the exception of the polymer coating that needs to go on, the contractor that was to do that was supposed to be here first of this week, they're stuck in Nebraska on some other jobs, they can't be here until at least the eighth of October, so we went ahead, and Martin went ahead and opened the road up. I will mention, too, for the record, that we've had barricades up out there allowing that bridge to cure, and had construction equipment around, and I know it looks like it's usable, but we also have recorded with our cameras numerous vehicles going around the barricades, violating the barricade and the law in crossing that bridge, so at this point, we don't intend to pursue that, but just kind of make it known to residents that we do monitor those things, and we do have a lot of pictures of people violating the law, not following those traffic control devices, so when the barricades are up, and they're up for a reason, even though it may not be totally visible, the bridge either isn't cured, it's not finished, there could be a hole in the middle of the bridge, it's not done, or what it could be, so we would just ask the public to follow the legal signs, so, and I'll stop at that point.
Okay, thank you, Brad. We have before us today some 4Hers, why don't, before we do it, we'll have you introduce yourself, Jill.
I'm Jill Martenson, we're a youth development agent, you guys want to come up? I think we have a couple more that might be joining us in a couple minutes, but you guys want to come up? And then we'll have our agents introduce themselves.
I'm James Cooper, the Ag Agent.
Chelsea Meyer, SCS agent.
And James, you've been with us for how long now?
Two months.
I'll read the deal, Lynn.
You guys can just get here.
You want to introduce yourself?
You say you do have more coming?
Oh, you?
We might have a couple more, but we're okay, let's go ahead and talk.
I'll tell you what, I'll read the resolution, or the proclamation, and then we'll wait and have an introduction. National 4H Week is 2015 proclaimed by Dixon, the Board of Commissioners of Dixon County, Kansas, whereas October 4th through October 10th, 2015 is National 4H Week, in recognition of the largest out-of-school education program for youth, and whereas 4H Week is served nationally by over 6.5 million 4H youth, and whereas there are over 325 4Hers in 12 community clubs active in Dixon County, and whereas there are over 150 adult volunteers, leaders in the county, and whereas 4H builds our experience to give equal training to health, art, hands, and health. Whereas 4H, as part of K-State Research and Extension, is a program where youth learn together through projects, events, and activities, and whereas 4H has been helping youth and adults learn, grow, and work together for more than 100 years, urging the people of this community to take advantage of the opportunity to become more aware of this special program, which gives youth the chance to learn together and individually as part of the Dixon County 4H Youth Development Program. Now, therefore, we, the Commissioners of Dixon County, do hereby proclaim October 4th through October 10th, 2015, as Dixon County 4H Week. Throughout the county, and all citizens are urged to attend, observe, and support the work of 4H Clubs done this day, first day of October, 2015. Now, let's introduce yourselves.
I'm John Prince, and I'm from the Detroit Ramblers Club.
What's your project? What's your...
I did crafts and horticulture.
I'm Jessie Prince from the same club, and I did crafts, which I put my gun holster in, fair into state, and then horticulture.
I'm Abby Prince from the Detroit Ramblers, I did horse, horticulture, floriculture, foods and nutrition, sewing, and crochet.
Yeah, man, what's your name?
Carol Gaffeler.
Carol.
And I'm the fragrant hoedockers, and I took bucket calf foods and photography.
My name's Colleen Gaffeler, I took steer this year, foods and nutrition, and I had a photo that went to state.
And I'll ask who your parents are, because they deserve having you in 4H. Who's your parents then?
All serious Scott and Carol Prince.
And your aunt?
And Carol Saturday.
Oh, okay.
Steve and Christopher.
Okay.
And Krista's here.
Well?
I think the newspaper wants to get a picture, too, so you might have you all come up here behind us, and...
Want to load on that now?
Yeah, while we're making that...
I move that we proclaim the week of October the 4th to the 10th as Dixon County 4H Week. Second.
Then move to second, we declare the 1st of October through the, I mean, 4th of October through the 10th of October as National 4H Week. Any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carried. And I don't like my picture taken, so I won't take it. Thank you very much.
Yes, thank you. Thank you a lot.
So, what was your favorite project?
Craft.
Crafts?
Food and nutrition.
Food and nutrition.
And horticulture.
Holland. Was your bucket, the steer?
Steer.
Steer? Bucket calf, okay.
How many years have you been in this individually? I mean, did you, a couple years, or, that you've been in 4H?
Oh, I, we booked it in two years.
I've been in for five. I've been in like since I was nine, so probably like eight years, I think.
And I've been in 4H for two, no more.
He came, he came with me.
Yeah, he's been in since he was born.
All right.
Well, like, thank...
With National 4H Week, we do have a forty-eight, forty-eight hours of 4H event, which will be next weekend, and our leadership squad is spearheading that, and they are doing a food drive for the Abilene and Harrington food banks, and so they will be set up at grocery stores, accepting monetary donations or donations of food, and they'll have lists of things that the food banks most need. So during that weekend, it's a statewide event to have as much community service done by our 4H Clubs as possible, so that's our Dixon County project. Clubs will also be donating, and any food that they collect, or money that they donate towards food banks in the month of October, will be averaged by the number of members in their club, and that's going to determine what order they eat at the 4H achievement anyway, so the club that donates the most to help make others eat get to eat first themselves, so that's, that's how that challenge will play out.
Thank you very much for coming in, I hope you go home and say thank you to all your leaders and the people helping the community, because without the people that we have in 4H involved...
Lot of volunteer people that's behind the scenes.
Yeah. Thank you very much.
Well, I think we're fortunate, too, I know Jill, you've given a new report before, but the, the level of participation in Dixon County really ranks pretty high as far as rural areas or central Kansas, or all of Kansas.
It does.
So, do you have any, kind of remind us of what that is, or...
As far as numbers of members?
Or how would you compare?
Yeah, so we have 300, and our last number was 323 was our official number for 2014, 2015, as far as number of community club members. We also have about 300 kids that we're reaching with school enrichment programs, especially the Wheat Science Bread in a Bag program, taking that out to the schools throughout the county, and then we also have new this year, a special interest club, which was our Browns Busy Beekeepers, and so those, that's the group that's doing the beehives out at Browns Park, and so that, that group involves not just current 4Hers, but also youth that are not in a traditional community club, and that one actually involves a lot of adults, because we had several adults that were interested in learning more about beekeeping, and so they've been involved in the project also.
Thank you. Didn't want to push you on the spot, but I knew you'd have the answer.
No, that's fine, we know those numbers.
Is the community garden this year been very active, or how's it going?
All of the plots, all the plots are filled, and have been gardened, and yeah, James has been working more with it, but it's been, it's been a busy place, we have a lot of people who are wanting to make sure that they get their plot reserved for next year, you know, they don't want it to slip out from under them, so as they're getting towards the end of the gardening season, they're making sure that they have it ready to go for next year.
Good.
It's been, it's been a neat project, the community garden, it's...
Yeah. I just...
It's been a good thing.
I knew it started off great, but I just didn't know it's continued a lot.
Yeah, last year there was quite a bit of work done on, they actually surveyed the plots, Dwayne Schreiber really wanted to make sure that they were square, because when we originally set it up, it was just with tape and tape measure, but he really wanted those squared, and wanted all the plots to be the same, so they've been, he did some work on surveying those, the corners have been marked, and then we also redid the paths, there was lots of wood chips on the paths that the gardeners can get between, and then there was also some issue about encroachment on the path, whether your garden was too far out, so, you know, some of those things, but it's a, it's a really, if you go, if you head out, it's, it's looking really good still. People planted a lot of viney things that look pretty impressive.
Craig, I'm kind of interested, you asked them what their project was, and I, did you and Laverne, did you guys have projects for 4H?
Oh, yes.
You might enlighten them, let them know.
Well, back in the old days, which I could get cute, we went out, the fair was Monday through Friday, my brother and I'd go out Sunday and pick out the land we wanted to take for the sheep.
I'd rather you not tell these stories.
Hey, but there was a lot more work then, because they looked like a piece of wood when they got done, they were locked up, there was a lot more work fitting in.
Well, uh...
Back in the old age, you know?
Older days than Craig, when I started, you know, and I started out, you know, about eight years of age, probably, but I remember the first dairy calf that my dad had for me, and so, you know, I always had, and I showed it at Harrington and Abilene both, and like I say, I really enjoyed, and I still enjoy fairs, but, you know, I've really enjoyed the fair experiences that I had, and, and like I say, I really appreciate that we had some excellent leaders in the Holland Sunflowers Club, and, and like I say, that's what makes the volunteers, is what makes the program really excel in the projects.
Absolutely. My first project was woodworking, and I made a toolbox, and my dad still uses that toolbox, he's a carpenter. It's still around.
Well, we need to bless Nita Miller, because she was the Detroit Ramblers for all the time we've been in, and boy, talk about an incredible leader, and she's still going to be on the sidelines giving, but she is one lady who's really made a difference.
Well, like I said, it says the volunteers, it makes sense.
Our volunteers.
Yeah. Anything else?
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Keep us a good word.
Oh, you're going to get held up by the train now. Just go stay. Just go stay for the meeting.
What if we get a copy of that?
I think...
I forgot.
So, leaving now. Thanks for coming, guys, thank you.
Thank you, Jill.
Now you're all official.
Bye, Collins, see you.
Ah, go ahead, Brad.
Well, I think it's almost assured. Okay, last week, of course, was our camera wipe cleanup, I provided your report, on the front it shows the tennies for the county and the city, or cities, and then on the back it shows what we did two years ago, and the last one we did, and the tennies was up a little bit for the cities this year, now a little bit for the county, so, but all in all, it's about the same, about the same overall, it's in about, you know, ten or twelve tons, so, had a very good turnout, Martin sent several guys out to help Randy, worked out very well, and it was, they said it was, it was steady, so...
Yeah, my brother took his trailer over on Friday, and he said before he got out of the truck to help him get his stuff out, so...
He had it unloaded?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, well, we sent guys out, and they, they help unload, and if they don't, then it gets bottlenecked up out there, and we just can't get it in and out fast enough, so, but it worked out well, and they ran this, and they work real, real constant, and real positive, so...
Well, I think it's a program that's, I'd like to see continued, just because it does keep the stuff out of the ditches and places where it shouldn't be dumped, and...
Yeah, people do wait and take advantage of it, but our overall cost for the tennies was about $6,500, so in the whole, it's not a lot of money, you know, the help that we appropriated after, we did a little bit more, but we're paying them anyhow, so...
It's PR.
Yeah, it's good PR, absolutely, it's good service to provide, so... And I mentioned the KKM coverage questionnaire, we'll get that sent in, it's just a DNA form we have to fill out. We did, John and I, John Goff and I did two meetings with interested architect firms this week, we've got another one next week, so we're nearing the deadline, I think, which is the 15th of October or so, and after that point, we'll bring, that's when they have to submit their qualifications to us, of course, they'll ring us to you, so, and along that same lines, again, I, the chamber meeting last night, Gareth and I spoke at, I thought went real well, much better than we anticipated it could, so I thought we had some really good support from some very key members in the community, and hopefully helped them understand some of our issues, so, I know, at least I felt like we just touched on the tip of the iceberg, but a lot of stuff that, that he and I take for granted, that we see every day or know, other people don't know, and, and as we get into this process down the road here, so we'll be able to get into educating the public a little better, maybe do some, not only virtual tours, but some real tours of the jail if we can, depending on the numbers, and I think that'll help people understand tremendously some of the issues we've got, so...
Yeah, and I think there were good questions also from the audience.
Yeah, I, what I appreciated was the people were wanting to listen, were willing to listen, and not have their mind just made up one way or the other, and I think just educating the people, and letting them understand kind of where we're coming from, that'd be helpful, to get this process started, anyway.
I'm not so sure if they have another one, that might not be a good idea to show that little video that, I thought about it last night, but I didn't, it kind of came up quickly, and so, I think it would be pretty enlightening, so...
Yeah, I...
Which video are you talking about?
Why, why...
Why County, or jails.
Yeah, why community jails matter.
Oh, okay, yeah, right.
I mean, it says so much more distinctly than what we do, you know, what the purpose of a jail is, and who uses it, and everybody at effect. It's going to happen no matter what, there was a question to ask, it, you know, I think people think we're farther along with the decisions that have been made, and there hasn't been any, you know, it's not a done deal, where we're going to build, I mean, the needs assessment hasn't been done.
Yeah, at this point, you know, I've told a number of people, at this point, my opinion is, was we're, to do nothing is irresponsible.
Right.
I think we need to be doing what we're doing, and checking into it, and looking at our options, because this is not an issue that's going to go away, you know, it's not going to fix itself, and so, it is what it is, so...
Any other questions for Brad? Notice and communications? Notice of hearing from the Kansas Housing Resource Corporation. State of Kansas will conduct a public hearing to provide an opportunity for citizens to review and comment upon the preliminary draft of the 2016 Plan of 2014 through 2018. Hearing is scheduled for Wednesday, October 7th, 10:30, 12:00 p.m. at the Kansas Housing Resource Corporation, 611 South Avenue, Suite 300, Suite 300. Got an invitation, you're invited on Friday, October 23rd, 2015, 9:00 a.m. to 2:30, the Ambassador Hotel, presented by George K. Baum and Company. Building support for... Four steps to election victories and buildings, public support for projects, to refund or not to refund savings, actual case study of... actual case study of recent current advanced refunding and bond ratings, what you need to know for your benefit. Got another letter from the same company and stuff they've been involved with. They've been in Ottawa County, the Health Center, Sumner County, City of Titan. And then I'm not sure if we all got an invitation. I don't know how long it's going to take for them to get these online to us for the First Division D-VAR activation ceremony. There was nothing on the computer for notices, no resolutions considered, no unfinished business, other business, none?
I'm a juror, second.
I'm moving to second then. Any discussion? Not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. I know that's what you're waiting for.